Gaveling in and hopefully soon we'll be able to meet in chambers real soon. Um, would the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Peniagua.
Here.
Counselor White.
Here.
Counselor Carney.
Here.
Counselor Hogan.
Here.
Counselor Majoke.
Here.
Counselor Allen.
Here.
Counselor Driscoll.
Here.
All present, Madam President.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November twenty-third meeting?
So move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
The minutes of the November ninth meeting have been approved unanimously.
Thank you. Are there any petitions?
No, Madam President.
Are there any committee reports? Are there any communications?
Yes, Madam President. I have a communication from Dennis Coleman, a letter acknowledging receipt of and accepting of the terms and conditions of ordinance number four seventy-four and four seventy-five of two thousand and twenty.
Thank you. I have item eight. I would like to introduce it and urge its adoption. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Do you want to call for objections and discussion?
I'm sorry, I'm asleep. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen. Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Number eight is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Counselor Bay.
Thank you, Madam President. I have item number nine. I'd like to introduce it and urge its adoption.
Thank you. Item nine. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. I couldn't hear you, Counselor Carney.
Hear me now?
Yes. Okay, so I guess that's a yes. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item nine is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Counselor Green.
He, Madam President, I have items ten through seventeen. Item fourteen will be held for all the other remaining items. I'd like to introduce them and their details.
Thank you. Item ten. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen. Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item ten is adopted by unanimous vote.
Item eleven. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen. And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item eleven is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twelve. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twelve is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item thirteen. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen. Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirteen is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item fourteen is being held. Item fifteen. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen. And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item fifteen is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item sixteen. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White. Was that a yes, Counselor White?
That was a yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item sixteen is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item seventeen. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen. And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item seventeen is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Counselor Carney.
President, I have items eighteen through thirty-five. Eighteen will be held. Nineteen through thirty-five are ready. Those items that I called ready, I'd like to introduce and urge their adoption.
Thank you. Item eighteen is being held. Item nineteen. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Yes, I can. Thank you. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Number nineteen is approved by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. I guess that's a yes, Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty-one. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen. And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Twenty-one is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty-two. Are there any objections? Discussions? Okay, somebody is not on mute.
It's Counselor Hogan.
I'm sorry. Counselor Bay, always catching me.
Go on mute, Pat. Okay, you threw me off. We're on twenty-two, right? Yes. Any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
So that's a yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. I couldn't hear you, Counselor Carney. I'm sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-two is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty-three. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-three is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty-four. Are there any objections? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Twenty-four is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Thank you. Item twenty-five. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White. I'm sorry, I couldn't hear Counselor White.
That's a yes.
Thank you. Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen. And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Twenty-five is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty-six. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan. I couldn't hear Counselor Hogan. Okay. Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-six is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty-seven. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item twenty-seven is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty-eight. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Ye- yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Twenty-eight is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item twenty-nine. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Driscoll. Item twenty-nine is unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item thirty. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan. I think you're done. Okay, thank you. Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item thirty-one. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen. And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-one is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item thirty-two. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen. And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-two is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item thirty-three. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-three is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item thirty-four. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-four is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item thirty-five. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-five is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Counselor Hogan.
Uh, thank you, President Hudson. I'd like to introduce and urge the adoption of items thirty-six through forty-four.
Well, thank you, sir. Item thirty-six. Are there any objections? Discussion?
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes, John.
Thank you. Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-six is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item thirty-seven. Are there any objections? Discuss? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Counselor Carney, can you please make sure you're unmuted before you vote? I'm having a hard time hearing you.
Okay, our item thirty is adopted.
Yes, excuse me. Item thirty-seven is adopted by unanimous vote.
Items thirty-eight. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney. Counselor Hogan.
John.
Okay, that's a yes. Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen.
Yes.
And Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-eight is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item thirty-nine. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Yes, Madam President. Counselor Bay.
Yes.
Counselor Green.
Yes.
Counselor Peniagua.
Yes.
Counselor White.
Yes.
Counselor Carney.
Yes.
Counselor Hogan.
Yes.
Counselor Majoke.
Yes.
Counselor Allen. Counselor Driscoll.
Yes.
Item thirty-nine is adopted by unanimous vote.
Thank you. Item forty. Are there any objections? Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Bay?
Yes.
Counselor Green?
Yes.
Counselor Piniagua?
Yes.
Counselor White?
Yes.
Counselor Carney? Counselor Hogan?
Yes.